We have a quorum. We will start shortly. I'm just going to wait on the planning manager to get here. So, thank you. We have a quorum. We will start shortly. I'm just going to wait on the planning manager to get here. So, thank you. All right. I'm going to call to order the December 3 planning commission meeting at 6:05. All right. I'm going to call to order the December 3 planning commission meeting at 6:05. We have President Michael Butcher from our planning department. We have our planning manager, Amy Bavin. We have President Michael Butcher from our planning department. We have our planning manager, Amy Bavin. And representing our legal counsel from the Kelly Law Firm is Jake. And then our commissioners. And representing our legal counsel from the Kelly Law Firm is Jake. And then our commissioners. Roll call? Roll call?
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Shepherd. Commissioner Shepherd.
Present. Present.
Commissioner Northcross. Commissioner Northcross.
Present. Present.
Commissioner Duval announced her absence. I don't see Commissioner McGinnis. He did say he would be late today. Commissioner Duval announced her absence. I don't see Commissioner McGinnis. He did say he would be late today. Vice Chair Jackson. Vice Chair Jackson.
Present.
Present.
And Chair Sinclair. And Chair Sinclair.
Present. Present.
We have a quorum. We have a quorum.
Do we have any official communications from staff? Do we have any official communications from staff?
No, no official communications. No, no official communications.
Okay. Do I, do I hear any amendments to the agenda? Okay. Do I, do I hear any amendments to the agenda?
Madam Chair, we had a request from the applicant for what is currently Agenda Item Number 10,
Madam Chair, we had a request from the applicant for what is currently Agenda Item Number 10,
which is new business. They had said that members of their team have to leave by 7:00 PM
which is new business. They had said that members of their team have to leave by 7:00 PM
and they had asked if we could consider reordering the agenda.
and they had asked if we could consider reordering the agenda.
Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion? Any amendments? Any amendments? We can discuss it if you'd like. We can discuss it if you'd like. Chris, do you have any thoughts of re... Chris, do you have any thoughts of re...
We do have a public... We do have a public...
Moving around things on the agenda? Moving around things on the agenda?
I mean, we do have public hearings, but if the motion is on the floor, consider it. I mean, we do have public hearings, but if the motion is on the floor, consider it.
Chris? Chris?
I just want to be careful to not set precedence. I certainly respect that folks have things going on, I just want to be careful to not set precedence. I certainly respect that folks have things going on, but that's probably the case for everybody on the agenda and/or people on the agenda in the future. but that's probably the case for everybody on the agenda and/or people on the agenda in the future. So with that in mind, I would opt, because we just found this out the day of and this wasn't a request in advance, So with that in mind, I would opt, because we just found this out the day of and this wasn't a request in advance, I would opt to leave it as is for today. I would opt to leave it as is for today.
Good. Tim? Good. Tim?
I'm fine with that. I would agree. I'm fine with that. I would agree.
Mike? Mike?
What's that? Oh, I thought you said Mike. What's that? Oh, I thought you said Mike.
No. No. M.I.C. M.I.C.
So what would their alternatives be? Tabling it if they wanted to? So what would their alternatives be? Tabling it if they wanted to? Okay. Is the applicant here? Okay. Is the applicant here? Okay. I mean, that would be probably the best alternative. I don't know how fast everything else is going to move, but that's probably the best. Okay. I mean, that would be probably the best alternative. I don't know how fast everything else is going to move, but that's probably the best.
We'll still have representation if we're gonna stay the same. We'll still have representation if we're gonna stay the same.
Okay. Okay.
So it's not the end of the world. It was just a request and it was something I had to draw people in. So it's not the end of the world. It was just a request and it was something I had to draw people in.
Yeah, I agree with Chris. I mean, it's something we probably shouldn't do. Yeah, I agree with Chris. I mean, it's something we probably shouldn't do.
No problem. I'd be sure. No problem. I'd be sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Do I hear a motion for approval of the agenda? Okay. Do I hear a motion for approval of the agenda?
I move the agenda be approved. I second it. I move the agenda be approved. I second it.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye. Approval of the minutes, the October minutes. Are there any changes? Approval of the minutes, the October minutes. Are there any changes? Hearing none. Roll call for approval of the October minutes? Hearing none. Roll call for approval of the October minutes?
Well, I move to approve October minutes. Well, I move to approve October minutes.
Support. Support.
Roll call? Roll call?
Commissioner Shepherd. Commissioner Shepherd.
Yes, to approve. Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Northcross. Commissioner Northcross.
Yes, to approve. Yes, to approve.
Vice Chair Jackson. Vice Chair Jackson.
Yes, to approve. Yes, to approve.
And Chair Sinclair. And Chair Sinclair.
Yes, to approve. Yes, to approve.
Thank you. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Motion passed unanimously.
Do I hear any amendments to the November meeting minutes? Do I hear any amendments to the November meeting minutes? Northcross? Northcross?
None. None.
Jackson? Jackson?
Nope. Nope.
Shepherd, one. Do I hear a motion? Shepherd, one. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the November 13, 2025 meeting minutes. I move to approve the November 13, 2025 meeting minutes.
Support. Support.
All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye. Do we have any special presentations? Do we have any special presentations?
None. None.
No? No? Okay. Public comment for items not on the agenda. You have two minutes. Okay. Public comment for items not on the agenda. You have two minutes. And please state your name and address for the record. And please state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll go on to our public hearings. First public hearing is PSEP 25-014 Botanical Greens Incorporated, Seeing none, we'll go on to our public hearings. First public hearing is PSEP 25-014 Botanical Greens Incorporated, Adult Use Cannabis Grower, 1651 East Highwood Boulevard. Adult Use Cannabis Grower, 1651 East Highwood Boulevard. Presentation by staff. Presentation by staff.
Amy, is Cesar Chavez available? Why don't we do, why don't we do that and see if someone else can find, um, uh, Highwood? No problem.
Yeah, I brought my laptop and I have the, uh, handout or, or the package you sent to me if you want to use an HDMI and show it that way. I do have my own laptop here. I've got that, I've got that PDF loaded. You want to use that?
Why don't, why don't we just hear Cesar Chavez right now?
Okay.
Not even Cesar Chavez? Michael, can you use the PDF package that you gave us or the, the handouts that, wow? Who, from the public? We have members of the public here. What, what application numbers are you interested in seeing or speaking about?
Your Highwood.
Your Highwood? Darlene, was there any, was there a specific one that you wanted to speak on or see? No?
Yeah, we should, we, we should be able to resolve both issues within five minutes.
At this time, we're going to take a five-minute break and see if we can get this application loaded. Thank you.
Is this the D drive?
Yeah. I guess we could have the camera, tape it up there and have the camera zoom in. If somebody's over in the control room, you want to do it that way? Hi, I'm Mickey. Ah, okay. Got the right person on the job now.
We can't, uh, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
You can chill here.
Sending it right now. Yeah. Currently in use. I might have it open in more than one browser or something. Because the document is open in it. All right, eject. There we go. So there are three files on there. Yeah.
Okay, back to our presentation on PS EP twenty-five dash zero-one-four, sixteen fifty-one East Highwood Boulevard.
Appreciate the patience, thank you.
Marijuana grow facility.
All right, now let's see if the remote works. Nope, so I'll take the microphone over here. Okay. So we're talking about six, one-six-five-one High, East Highwood Boulevard. They have a special exception and a site plan review request. The applicant is Botanical Greens and they would like to create a, an adult-use marijuana grower facility at that address. The site is on the Highwood Boulevard, if you're familiar with it, it makes sort of a lowercase h. So West Highwood is a north-south street and then East Highwood sits kind of east of that. As you're going north, it angles west and, and dead ends at West Highwood Street. So, um, that's sort of in the northern tier of the city there. And in a site-zoned IP one for industrial park. And you could consider the use urban agriculture, but because it's marijuana specifically, it has to come for a, a special exception permit. And we are recommending approval with one condition. So the, there's an existing, almost seventeen thousand square foot building on the site, on a two-point-three-seven acre site altogether, that falls within the Walton Boulevard, mari- adult-use marijuana overlay district. The building had been a machine chopped previously. And the site is surrounded by buildings of a similar type and scale and, and sort of use, um, platform and, and meant the, in the master plan, it designates the land Research and Development Campus. So that's sort of the future land use vision for the site, meant to encourage low-impact manufacturing and offices, medical services, research and technology facilities, things like that. Where the site is, is fairly set aside from, set away from surrounding neighborhoods. The streets don't actually connect to the closest neighborhoods. So you can see how East Highwood sort of, as you're going north, angles to the west. And the site is kind of an L shape with the, with the light industrial building sort of right in the middle of the site. Here's the zoning map that shows the, the area in gray is that IP one Industrial Park District. And then the blue hatching is the Walton Boulevard, uh, over, marijuana overlay district. And here's the master plan map showing that Research and Development Campus designation for the, the industrial park area. The standards of approval for a marijuana grower establishment, there are several under section two-point-five-five-one of the, of zoning ordinance. Those are also listed in, in your packet in, in the staff report. And the very bottom one, site design, we'll talk about that with the site plan review portion. Similarly, for standards of approval for marijuana uses specifically, the, the, the use cannot negatively impact surrounding residential neighborhoods. Will provide easy access with accessible parking for, for folks to get, you know, in and out of the site and the building easily. It has to be adequately served by utilities and being an existing building with, you know, previous businesses, industrial businesses there. It clearly has that. The, 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 the infrastructure, the streets, things like that have to be able to, to accommodate it, and they do. And the marijuana business will demonstrate a safe and secure environment and uphold the public welfare of the community. And will not add impromptu costs to city municipal services, things like that. And staff finds that those standards have been met. There are buffer distance requirements from, it has to be a thousand feet, no less than a thousand feet from any kind of school and no less than five hundred feet from childcare parks, religious uses. And staff finds that that standard has been met. Another particular standard of approval for marijuana-specific uses is under chapter, section, chapter three, section twelve-ten. And we'll, we'll be talking about that coming up. So the, the proposed use has to be harmonious with the Pontiac master plan, we talked about that. Should be harmonious with the existing and intended character of the general vicinity. And it being a very similar building to the rest of the building surrounding it, um, you know, meets that. So staff altogether finds all seven of these standards have been met. So this kind of reiterates that, talking about the master plan and Research and Development Campus. The, the, the building sits harmoniously with its surroundings in terms of, you know, use and scale and size and that, and appearance. Is, is adequately served by public facilities and services and will not involve uses that will harm the, the surroundings. So staff recommends approval with the condition that the conditions of approval provided in the site plan review must be completed. So this kind of tie bars it to the site plan review, which we'll be talking about as well.
Thank you. Does the applicant want to come to the mic? Please state your name and address for the record and you can add anything further that you'd like.
As far as?
Regarding the special exception permit.
My name is Selma DeHolic, address one-six-five-one East Highwood. So just a little bit of background, we are right now operational as medical classy. So basically for us, nothing would change besides the fact that we would have adult use, which, and I'm not sure how involved you guys are with the news and stuff like that, with the whole wholesale twenty-four percent tax coming in. And we don't know what the benefit of it is, but since we have gone this far with the adult use, we just would like to desire to proceed through and get the best outcome. Basically, what we try to do is grow very high-quality craft cannabis, and I know a lot of facilities do say that. We don't remediate our product. We truly want to be able to produce something that we would feel comfortable enough to offer a family member of ours if they were in need of it, you know, with any type of disease or cancer or anything like that, so.
No questions at this time.
Obviously, like you said, going to the adult-use model may not be in your best interest from a business standpoint at this point. But, um, thank you for being in Pontiac, choosing Pontiac and making this your home and wanting to get to this point. And obviously you'll do what's best for your business moving forward. But just want to say appreciate your patience with the city for finally being able to get to this point.
And it is patience, I will be super transparent. And like, I've heard people get their licenses and I'm like, how? And it's, you know, small communities and Royal Oak and they were like just adamant, I'm like, how'd you get your license? And they're like, I don't know, somebody did something blah blah blah. And I'm like, no, we have to go through hurdles, which I understand in the long run is a good thing. And, you know, you want to make sure you're protected as the city and everything's compliant, so I understand all those hoops, but yeah. Yeah, lots of patience.
Here we are now, so thank you.
I don't have any questions. At this time, I'm going to open it up to our public hearing. You have two minutes to speak, state your name and address for the record. This is just on the special exception permit at six, I'm going to open the public hearing up at six-thirty-four. Seeing no public comment, I am going to close the public hearing at six-thirty-four. Anything further from commissioners? Norcross?
I too say thank you for continuing the, the operation here and wanting to expand in Pontiac.
Jackson? Shepherd? No comments from me? Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the requested special exception for adult-use marijuana growing, grower facility at sixteen fifty-one East Highwood Boulevard, based on the findings of fact identified in the staff report and with the condition outlined in the, outlined in the staff report. SPR two-five dash zero-three-seven, if I didn't say that.
I'm sorry, this one is zero-three-four.
Then zero-three-four it is.
Do I hear a support?
Support.
Motion by Shepherd, support by Jackson, roll call please.
Commissioner Norcross?
Yes to approve.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes to approve.
Vice Chair Jackson?
Yes to approve.
And Chair Sinclair?
Yes to approve.
Motion passed unanimously.
Um, going on to our next application, application number PS PR twenty-five dash zero-three-seven, site plan review for sixteen fifty-one East Highwood Boulevard.
Yes, this is the, the same address, same, uh, use request. So along with the, the, the site, the special exception permit, they're going for a site plan review. Again, it's in the Walton Boulevard overlay district and staff recommends approval with two conditions. So here's a photo of the building from Google from, from the street. It sits on two-and-a-third acres, the building itself is almost seventeen thousand square feet within an industrial park area. Here is the, the general site plan. So the building is kind of an L shape, you can see in the center of the, of the property there. Sits back from East Highwood behind a planted berm with several, several streets on it. The, the, the little portion that's sort of offset to the east, to the right of the drawing, that's the office facility with the grow facility in the big rectangle sort of behind it from there. There are a handful of outstanding kind of items that, that we, that staff would like to see to, to be able to, to totally confirm compliance. Under two-point-four-zero-four-C, we'd like to see, um, there, there is rooftop mechanical equipment you can see from the street, so we'd like to see that screened. In fact, the ordinance requires it. Elevation drawings, it's an existing structure, but, you know, we, we would like to confirm that everything is going to stay the same if there are no changes to, to the, you know, the design of the building, anything like that. The plan, a couple of things I included here that, that do meet the requirements. Odor, because that's, that regularly comes up with marijuana, proposed marijuana uses. There is an odor suppression system in the plan in, shown in the drawings there, so that has been met, as well as having an emergency generator. There, we have no lighting information on, you know, exterior lighting, so we'd like to see a photometric plan to show what's going to be, you know, what's going to be lit on the site. And botanical greens, I don't know if that, it sounds like your company name, but because of the ordinance, the way the ordinance is written in Pontiac, words like green, words that sort of suggest marijuana uses are prohibited. To the commission, I'm not sure if that particular word is, is prohibited, but wanted to put that in there. Now regarding parking, there are forty-two spaces on the site and forty-seven would be required, given the size of the facility and the, the number of employees, I understand. I, I've been told that it would have. If the applicant doesn't need that many spaces, then, you know, provide us some sort of evidence, some sort of documentation of that and, and the, the planning commission can reduce that. Within parking lots, we like to see pedestrian crosswalks, just to sort of note where pedestrians should sort of, where drivers should expect to encounter pedestrians, because it's quite a long and, and large parking lot. You know, please include crosswalks for, for safe patches, passage across the lot. And then we require certain colors in, in parking lots, striping, which wasn't indicated, so please include that as well. And then the ninety-degree angle parking spaces are required to be a minimum twenty feet deep. They are, they're nineteen feet on the, on the site plan, so we'd like them lengthened by a foot. There are general standards for approval for, you know, for, for these kind of uses as well. Circulation, buildings, natural features, site layout and screening. These, this proposal meets these, these standards. And then one more is compliance with the zoning ordinance. And the items that we talked about before are, we would like to see those, um, you know, some of those questions answered, some of those things reflected in drawings, including the, um, I didn't mention this, the screening around the dumpster as well and, and generator enclosures. The generator is, is proposed to be on the ground, just sort of on the, on the south facade of the building there. The photometric plan, the color elevations, the rooftop screening. I thought I saw a loading dock, or at least there's a, a loading door on the south, right in the middle of the south side of the facade. And I don't remember if that was labeled loading dock or not, but if, if, if it is, please include those details. A parking lot of that size requires two bicycle parking spaces, so if you could add a, you know, a rack, um, we would appreciate that. Maneuvering lane dimensions, so, you know, how, how wide the parking lanes are and, and how easy it is for trucks to be able to kind of move back and forth within the site, things like that. That needs to be in there. I mentioned pedestrian crosswalks and, and striping. And so those things, with that information, we can, we can confirm compliance with the zoning ordinance. So staff recommends approval of the preliminary site plan with the, with the two conditions that, number one, all the items on the previous screen under compliance with the zoning ordinance, under standards of approval, um, are, are answered and met. And, um, the outstanding items noted in bold. So, so these, these handful of items here came from the report that I gave. And, and I think there is a bit of overlap between this and the previous screen. So with those items, we can, we can recommend approval. Here are sample motions to approve, deny. Mic go out? There we go. Sorry about that. Here are three sample motions to approve, deny or postpone the proposed preliminary site plan. Questions?
No. Can the applicant come back up to the mic? Is there anything that you want to add regarding the site plan?
One being the parking structure, our added parking, so we have forty-two indicated parking spots instead of forty-seven. We only have a, uh, seven to eight employees within our facility, number one. So obviously we don't require a lot. And then as a grow facility, for the sake of security in general, we only have a limited amount of vendors that come to tour the facility to see the product before, you know, we basically engage in a contract or anything like that. With that being said, we don't feel that we would require that many parking spaces. We have minimal trucks coming in. Basically, we just want to attract as less attention as possible, bring anybody in there, just because that's a safety issue, number one, for our, uh, staff members and then obviously, you know, the building as a whole. The other day, we panicked because we saw deer in the front and the cameras didn't catch them, so, so yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Shepherd?
I'm fine with the forty-two spaces for this size of building. Do we have to discuss the greens in the name? Like, is that something we even need to talk about?
That is all, that all goes through legal.
Okay, so that's not for us to make a decision on that?
That and signage goes through legal? Correct, Amy?
Because I have no problem with that, obviously. I know color is an issue, like, are you not allowed to paint green for some reason?
To add on to that, besides us having a DBA as botanical greens, uh, we have no other indication stating that it's botanical greens, what we are. We have an address.
You're not worried about that, the sign or anything like that?
No, no, we have an address for, you know, UPS deliveries, any vendors, anyone that comes in for an interview, but that's it. And we would like to keep it, you know, as minimal as possible, just so we're not attracting trouble.
I just didn't want you handcuffed by not being able to put the word greens on it.
Yeah, no, no, no.
If that's not an issue for you, then we won't talk about it.
No, no, yeah, we don't have it. We removed the previous company signs and we just left basically the glass foyer door like blank with the address on it.
If I can ask, will you just do medical then, because of the twenty-four percent?
So we're not sure what's happening right now, because it is in litigations, they decided to postpone it, making it effective as of January. But that is all still in the limbo, so we won't know.
They're not taxing medical?
And that's a great area too, they're saying that it's not, but the moment it gets flipped into adult use or gets sold to someone that's, um, adult use, then that's where that tax gets implemented.
And, and if I could add to Commissioner Shepherd, what I anticipate probably what will happen is eventually they'll bring the two industries together, legislatively, medical and adult use, and so they'll probably have to share tax anyway, so, yeah.
Just to clarify on Commissioner Shepherd. Just to clarify on Commissioner Shepherd's point, anything regarding the name or signage goes through our legal department. So we don't have any say here with regard to that. Commissioner Norcross.
No questions.
Commissioner Jackson.
Are we able, to the chair, are we able, Amy or Michael, about the parking spots, something that is at our discretion? Or legally, do we have to adhere to what you presented?
I'd have to double check. I believe there's some, what's the word? Some wiggle room with what's permitted. I'd have to check real quick.
So what it says in the staff report is almost directly quoted from the code. It's in section 4.304A. It specifies that the planning commission may modify required off-street parking based on evidence submitted by the applicant that another standard would be more reasonable.
Amy, can, this isn't an actual public hearing, correct?
For preliminary site plans, no. The public hearing is for the.
Just public comment? Okay, thank you. I don't have any comments at this time. I am going to open it up for public comment. If anyone would like to speak, state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
My name is Darlene Clark, 506 Nebraska Avenue. I just have a quick question, direct it to the board so the board can address it to the owner. I heard her say that she will have people come in to tour and this is a growing plant. But in the process, though this is not a facility only on contracts, are you selling anything out to the public from there? I know it's illegal to do it, but based on her comment, it leads me to believe like samples sent out, sample being given or purchased or anything of that quality.
Thank you.
So nothing is allowed to be for sale. We are allowed by state regulations to provide samples to our clients. But primarily, why somebody would want to tour the facility is if they were adamant to see that it's a clean place, that the plants that we're growing are healthy plants, especially if they care for that higher quality product. They're going to want to make sure that, you know, that what they're investing in makes sense. So it's easy for us to say, hey, we grow the best stuff. But that's what everybody else in the industry is saying. And then to build those relationships, that is why we would invite them to see it. And yes, we are able to provide them a sample. But those are also very limited in the quantity. And it would be just a little bit, for example, for the person themselves and to other people that they would be able to take back to the dispensary or processing center where they would be able to sample and say, hey, this is really good stuff. Let's engage in a contract with them or let's buy their product type of deal.
I'm sure by state law, you're prohibited for, from consumption on your site.
Yeah, we don't consume on our site, yeah. But, and most of the time, what they were, what they will do, owners themselves, is give this product to their inventory manager, general manager, somebody at their facility that will go home, smoke and come back and say, hey, this is good stuff, like, let's get a little bit of that type of deal. So that's usually how the process goes.
Okay. Are you leasing this building?
No. Well, technically, yes, yes. So we're the owner, Casey Meyer III, and then we're leasing it to Rosales Botanical Greens.
I'm just curious. Let's say you found a bigger building or a smaller building, whatnot. Is there remediation that has to happen after you leave?
I don't believe so because the, and, you know, you guys are more than welcome to tour the facility.
Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, code enforcement came in too and they seen it. I mean, everything is hospital grade. It's that clean. So the only thing they would have to do is basically knock down the walls. And our walls are basically shiny white when we installed them three years ago and they're still shiny white. So the epoxy flooring is white, you know. So, yeah, it's hospital grade, basically.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything further from commissioners? Norcross.
Are we going to offer in, as a part of the motion for approval, the reduction to 42 spaces, parking spaces?
I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Commissioner Jackson? Commissioner Shepherd? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, you do. Let me make sure. So I'd like to make a motion to approve preliminary site plan SPR 25-037. Yep, okay. So I move to approve the proposed site plan for an adult-use marijuana grow facility at 1651 East Highwood Boulevard based on the findings of fact identified in the staff report and with the condition that the site plans will be amended to address all deficiencies from the requirements of zoning ordinance identified in the staff report and to allow for 42 parking spaces instead of the recommended amount.
Do I hear support?
Support.
Motion by Jackson, support by Norcross. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Shepherd.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Northcross.
Yes, to approve.
Vice Chair Jackson.
Yes, to approve.
And Chair Sinclair.
Yes, to approve.
Motion passed unanimously.
Congratulations. Thank you for your patience this evening. Okay, going on to the next application. It's PSEP 25-016, special exception permit for an adult-use marijuana retailer at 962 Caesar E Chavez. Presentation by staff.
Okay. Special exception request number SEP 25-016 is for a, for the applicant, The Cured Leaf TC Incorporated, for an adult-use marijuana retailer facility at 962 Caesar E Chavez Avenue, located between Sarasota and Inglewood avenues on sort of the west side of Caesar Chavez within Pontiac. The site is zoned C3-quarter commercial, which allows retail use by right. But again, being a marijuana use, that requires a special exception permit. This is tied bar to site plan review application SPR 25-045 as well. And for the special exception, staff recommends approval with one condition. So what's on site is a, an approximately 1,700-square-foot existing structure on a parcel that's about a third of an acre altogether that falls within the Caesar E Chavez Avenue marijuana, adult-use marijuana overlay district. The site was previously an automobile dealership. So the front, most of the front of the property is, you know, is paved for a parking lot. And then the building sits at the back of the property. Just adjacent to the north, across an alley, is single-family residential use. The, that, the stretch of Caesar Chavez to the east is also commercial going west. There's a large auto, used auto parts facility. But it's, you know, the whole corridor is kind of a mix of commercial and light industrial uses, light industrial particularly across Caesar Chavez. So these, this complies both with master plan and the zoning ordinance in terms of use. And, you know, I've listed all the uses of the site and the surroundings on the screen here. To the north, the R1, R1 zoning and neighborhood residential in the master plan, the C3-quarter mixed use on the master plan that kind of goes all along Caesar Chavez there. And then M1 and light manufacturing, M1 light manufacturing zoning along with research and development campus across Caesar Chavez. And I've got maps that show those. Here's the site, first of all. So in kind of a diamond shape, the building is at the upper right-hand corner there with the parking lot in front facing Caesar Chavez Avenue. Here's the zoning map with the site outlined in green. And I just realized I outlined the adjacent property as well. So in, within the green outline, it's the piece of property on the left to the west. And you can see the color represents the C3-quarter commercial district. And then the blue hatching is the Caesar Chavez adult-use marijuana overlay. Here's the master plan map that shows the site outlined in red. And that sort of purple color represents the corridor mixed use category, land use category in the master plan. So that's sort of the future vision for the site. And it complies with both. Section 2.553, the adult-use marijuana retailer section of the zoning ordinance has standards of approval, you know, for marijuana uses. Kind of similar to the SEP application. So these general provisions, these have to be met. And recognizing that some of these will, you know, will only be seen once the facility is operational, we find so far that they will be met. Similarly here, standards of approval, this is another section for marijuana uses, adult-use marijuana facilities, that they don't impact surrounding residential neighborhoods, that they're easy to access and serve by existing utilities with sufficient capacity. The streets around it can, can handle the added traffic with this use. It's safe and secure and, you know, will not be detrimental to the community. The business will not add unintended or impromptu costs to city municipal services. And then it will comply with section 6.303 standards of approval, which we'll talk about coming up. So again, inasmuch as some of these standards can only be confirmed once it's, once it's open or through site plan review, staff finds that these standards have been met. So marijuana, other marijuana-specific standards of approval include buffer distances. As I mentioned before, it has to be less than 500 feet from childcare parks or religious institutions or 1,000 feet from any kind of school. We find these have been met. I think I covered these already, the standards of approval. So analysis, we find that it complies with the zoning ordinance and the master plan, that it's, it will not change the essential character of the area or negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood. It's adequately served by essential public facilities, services, infrastructure, that kind of thing, and will not involve uses, activities, processes, materials and such that will, that will cause harm to the surroundings. So staff recommends approval of the site plan with the condition that all the conditions of approval provided in the review on the next screen. Oh, no, I don't have that on the next screen, but the previous screens that you saw, that those must be completed.
Thank you. Does the applicant want to come to the mic? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Alejandro Fernandez. I'm with Stonefield Engineering. We're located at 555 South Old Woodward, Birmingham, Michigan. We're the civils of the project and we're representing the applicant, The Cured Leaf TC. I think I covered all the good points on this one. My big spiel is going to be on the next one.
Okay.
If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Any questions from commissioners at this time? Commissioner Norcross.
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Jackson.
Not at this time.
Commissioner Shepherd. And I don't have any questions. I have to open it up for a public hearing. Opening the public hearing at 6:59. You have two minutes. State your name and address for the record.
Darlene Clark, you want my address once again? 506 Nebraska. I got a few questions. Looking at it on the, on the map, on Sky Map, it looks like the street that, the building appears to be, he's right, on a single.
It's on the special exception permit. You might want to save this for site plan.
You want me to say that for that? Okay.
Yes.
I can.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Anything further from commissioners? Hearing.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Jackson.
Yeah, so this shouldn't have any pending on whether or not we approve based on what was presented. However, to stay on brand, the applicant in this process had to ask or at least present a plan for community benefits. And so if you are familiar with those community benefits or if you aren't, let me know. But does the applicant intend to continue to push forward with those community benefits? Do you happen to know where any of those are? Can you share any of that tonight? Or is that not your lane?
Commissioner Jackson? If I may interrupt, I believe that since this application was made before that ordinance was adopted, that this applicant would not be required to adhere to those items.
For, so not the community benefits agreement, but for adult, adult use, there was.
You're correct. I was speaking out of turn. You're correct.
Thank you.
I do not have that information on me. That's, I'm just a civil engineer, so.
All right, no problem. Thank you.
There is not just a civil engineer. Do I hear, I don't have any questions. Do I hear a motion? On the special exception?
Have we opened up the public hearing yet?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And closed it?
Oh. I don't believe I closed the public hearing. We're going to close the public hearing at 7:02. At this time, do I hear a motion for the special exception permit?
So I move to approve the requested special exception for retail sales, small indoor up to 5,000-square-feet use, adult-use marijuana retail at 962 Caesar E Chavez Avenue based on the findings of fact identified in the staff report and with the one condition outlined in the staff report.
Support.
Motion by Jackson, support by Shepherd. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Northcross.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Shepherd.
Yes, to approve.
Vice Chair Jackson.
Yes, to approve.
And Chair Sinclair.
Yes, to approve.
Motion passed unanimously.
Going on to the next presentation. PS PR 25-045, site plan review, 962 Caesar E Chavez.
Okay, so this is for the site plan portion of this project. The Cured Leaf has applied for site plan review, SPR 25-045, kind of tied bar to the previous one, SEP 25-016. For an adult-use marijuana retailer facility at 962 Caesar E Chavez with, and staff recommends approval with one condition. Here's a picture of the building sitting at the back of the property. It's sort of the northeast corner of the property, looking kind of northeasterly from Caesar Chavez, just to the southeast of Saratoga Avenue. It's about a third of an acre altogether and the building is about 1,700 square feet. You can sort of see with all the big garage doors that it was a, an auto repair facility in a, in a previous life. And it sits on a busy stretch of Caesar E Chavez bounded by auto-oriented commercial uses, by some light industrial uses across the street. And again, to the north, by single-family residential. Here is the site plan. You can see one, one access driveway kind of going northerly into the site. And then the building is at the very sort of upper right-hand corner of the image. It's a fairly small building, 1,700 square feet and is only about 22 feet deep, something like that, sitting at the, up toward the edge of the property. There are a few questions that we had that maybe the applicant can answer. One is about first-floor transparency, and I talked to the applicant several times about this. Of course, the standards call for a minimum of 40%. Because of the shallow dimension of the building, it makes it kind of difficult, given sort of how spaces are arranged, for there to be transparent glass into spaces where cannabis would not be. So, it was a little bit tough trying to sort of figure out how to work that, and we went through a few iterations of the facade. So, here is the facade as it stands today, the elevations as it stands today. And the glazing calculations, I don't know if you can read that from here, but, so toward the entrance there, where you see sort of the diagonal hash lines, that's meant to be transparent glass. And then surrounding that number 10, if you can see the number 10, above those in the clear-story windows, in the windows to the east, that is opaque spandrel glass. So I copied those dimensions, calculations on the screen before it. So the front of the building, the facade is about 835 square feet, the glazing area is 264 square feet, and that gives you a 31.6% transparency on the facade as it is. Spandrel glass area is 118 square feet, but I wasn't sure if that 118 square feet was included in the glazing area or in addition to. May I ask the applicant that?
I'm not 100% sure if the architect included that in their calculations as part of it or additional. So I think the 31.6% ratio is what is shown. I don't think that affects the calculations demonstrated there.
To staff? I'm seeing a different, I'm seeing a different, sorry, I'm stuck on a cord. I'm seeing a different elevation in the package that we have here tonight, and we had a different one in the package that we were sent via email. The one I am looking at is the same drawing you have up there. It looks like A2.0.1, and it's got glass above. Doesn't have like that awning on the right-hand side, and...
It does have some more panes of glass.
I just want it to be perfectly clear to other applicants that come before us with transparency, that we are looking at the same elevations because this has been an issue previously.
Okay, I see the difference you're seeing, and this does show glass-to-building ratio at 40%, where here it's 31.6%. I believe this is a later addition, with clear-story windows over the space that would be the sales room, sort of, unfortunately, I don't have a pointer, a working pointer, but in that large section of brick, for the folks who can't see the package, there are clear-story windows sort of at the top of the facade, sort of lining the top of the facade there, that show as transparent glass. So that actually, that takes care of that 40% requirement, according to these calculations.
And then also above the door on the right-hand side, and above that window?
Yes, surrounding the door, right. Yeah, that's sort of the staff door that leads to a break room, right behind the glass there. So they've expanded the glass surrounding that area.
If I can, since there, since then, there was another iteration of our plans. We re-looked at it, and due to like the small size of the building and the operations, we felt that it would be more appropriate, based on a section of the ordinance stating that if we provide additional architectural features throughout the masonry, we could lower the percentage of the glazing on the building. So our game plan is along that brick wall to provide sort of like, brick windows, similar to those seen in old architectural buildings, to kind of bring out that accent and still maintain a good-looking building, but without, you know, providing that visibility into our operations.
Point of privilege, I'm going to let Commissioner Jackson. Did you have a comment? Do you have a question? Okay, go ahead. Michael?
I apologize. Yeah, a handful of facade drawings came in kind of fast and furious. So the one you have on paper is more current than the one in the, in the presentation on the screen, so sorry about that. It does, it does meet it, the version in the packet that you have, meet that requirement for transparency. They also, just today, I got a couple proposed drawings, some with, and false windows done, trimmed in brick to look like windows, but, you know, but with brick where the glass would be, and another option with some wall plantings, plantings like right, sort of attached to the wall on the facade to add some visual interest in lieu of glass.
Okay. The problem that I have with this, is you get a stack of drawings in planning, building and safety, they're all A2.0.1. There's not one revision on here. They all have the same date, 12/19/24. The architect really should have put revisions on here. There's no way of knowing from my, for me, knowing what elevation I really should be looking at. I just have, I just have a problem with that. Michael, were you done with your presentation? I'm sorry.
Yes. And, you know, again, the version that you have in the packets was sort of the going version before the drawings I received today as well. So, yeah, there wasn't a revision date on the page that you've got, but it was otherwise the most recent that I had received.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to commissioner questions right now. Commissioner Shepherd, do you have any questions?
I think my comments follow along with yours. I don't know what we're approving. And I guess I have a question for Michael, too. Like, I'm not against the idea of using architectural stuff to get rid of the transparency, but this is the first time that I've heard of that. And I don't know if that, we've had this argument with so many people trying to do dispensary, is it trying to shrink it down? Are we, is it a new precedent that we're setting here?
Amy, can you clarify that? And can you...
I have never seen these drawings, and I didn't know anything about this until just now.
But my question, I guess, to you would be, can we use architectural design features to get rid of transparency requirements? Because we've had this fight with...
Correct.
We've tried to figure out how to make this a solution.
I'm not comfortable giving an answer on that until I've had an opportunity to look at the code. My understanding is that this, you know, what we're reading to you from the code is accurate, but I haven't had a chance to compare that to other sections, so.
I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Amy, can you clarify the transparency requirements required by the City of Pontiac and the state? If you know what the state requires, as far as percentage of transparency?
Is this a social equity retailer? Is that correct?
No, I believe this is just straight adult-use retail.
So, the reduction is only, applies to a social equity retailer?
Okay.
So I don't think that applies to this.
Got it. Okay.
So the percentage required by the City of Pontiac is what?
40%.
40%?
For the, within the zoning district, correct, Michael?
Correct.
For the what district?
For this zoning district, for this building type.
When is it 65?
If it, if it's on, for the, for the first floor of a building that is, you know, there are four different, five, four or five different building types. This is called front parking, with the parking lot in front, sort of more suburban model. The, and the minimum is 40% transparency with this. If it's more like a downtown building, up to the street, on the ground floor, if it's not residential, it's a minimum 65%.
Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Norcross?
Yes, can you help me out? I'm looking at the back alleyway, and I think there's a masonry wall called out, but I was looking for some details on that masonry wall. And this is the alleyway that'll be at the north end of the, north end of the property, and that public alley. I think there's a real opportunity there, that I just want to make sure we take advantage of it to improve that back section. And I think it's happening, but I was looking real quickly through the drawings, I didn't see if that, where that was called out, how that wall is going to be.
So, yeah, so here's the site plan that shows it at the, sort of at the very north, northeast corner of the building. And the alley behind it is an open right-of-way, so that's right up against the property line.
And I see there's going to be some plantings there as well. The height of that wall, is that going to be measured from the surface of their lot? Or the surface of the alleyway, which is fuck?
Commissioner Norcross?
It's on drawings A0.2.1. It calls out a new six-foot-high masonry wall.
Thank you, thank you. I was looking for that and didn't, didn't see it.
Sorry, Michael.
A zero... Okay. May I? Real quick? Because I think that's a real opportunity to improve that whole area. And, I still don't see the masonry wall. Where's... If you can help me out, thank you.
I'm going to ask a quick question to the applicant while they're doing it, if you don't mind, Chair. Can you explain the materials? Like, I don't know if you, you're not the architect, but can you explain kind of some of the materials you've got on the facade?
Yeah, so, if you look at the elevations, it's going to be all earth-toned. So you see the masonry, brick veneer, the small ones, it's all going to be a mix of earth-toned bricks. And then on the vertical panels, those are going to be Nishihara panel.
I'm sorry, what?
Nishihara panels, kind of looks like wooden panel alongside. So, all around, it's going to be like an earth-tone architectural building.
And the upper part, what is that material? That's...
The upper part...
It's not like a ephesus or anything like that, is it? It's metal? Okay, I didn't see that.
Believe it's metal panel.
Commissioner Norcross, are you done with your questions?
Okay, and that's a new six-foot-high masonry wall with the height. And I would assume, but I want to make sure, the height is measured from the property side of that wall, right? Not the alley side of the wall. The height of the wall. Because there's an existing masonry something there already.
I don't know how to answer that question. Maybe, Amy, do you know how to answer that question? I'm not.
I'm sorry, I was researching the other question in the code more thoroughly. Can you repeat the question?
The masonry wall that's noted on the drawing, just looking at, it says six foot, it's really small. Okay. Six foot high? And the height of that is measured from, I would assume, the property, the side of your property upward and not...
Correct. Yeah, so that...
Because you're right on the, right on the border.
Yeah, so, the intent of that wall is, as you point out, to provide, you know, screening from that alley and the trash enclosure loading area. In addition to that, if you look at the landscape plan, we also have trees around that area to provide like a real nice buffer.
Now, that existing block wall that's there in the alley, what happens to that?
Well, that would be gone. I think it's a fence or something. We're putting a brand-new one there.
Okay, great. I think it's a real opportunity to improve that section of the, of the community. Yes, yes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Commissioner Jackson?
The only thing that I'll say is, for whatever reason, to Commissioner Shepherd's point, it's important for us to know what we're approving before we actually approve it, right? And be able to see everything, because if new drawings came in today, we haven't had an opportunity to see those, right? We saw what was prior to that, which covered the 40% transparency situation that we were talking about, but obviously, what you propose might change that a little bit. And so, if that's the case, what I'm going to ask, assuming we move to approve, is that we ask for a final site plan review to come back to the commissioners before its final approval. So it would, I think it would already be done by staff if we don't ask for it to come back. But, to your point, we don't want to approve something that we haven't seen, right? So, anyway, I'm just throwing that out there for consumption to my colleagues.
Madam Chair, I apologize, you asked if I was finished. I was, I was done talking about the facade part. I hadn't finished the entire presentation for the, you know, with recommendations and things, so I, my mistake.
Thank you.
So this is an image, I put this in here, this is the proposed floor plan to show, you know, the building is only about 24 feet deep. On the west, sort of the lower left-hand corner is the waiting area, transparent windows can be, you know, can shine into that space, and then on the, in the lower right-hand corner where the break room is, you know, they can, they can go there as well. And so, the sales area sort of in the middle of it, in the drawings that you have in the packet, they show clear-story windows above sort of eye level that let some light into the space that adds some transparency, but, you know, you can't see the merchandise essentially from those windows. So, there are a few more things, you know, that we'd like included, including if, I hadn't heard if there's going to be, if there is or will be any mechanical equipment on the roof, and if there is rooftop equipment, we'd like to see a drawing of that, and, you know, a drawing demonstrating that it's been screened per, you know, per ordinance requirements. We'd like a color elevation as well, because with the, the many versions of the elevations that we've received so far, they've all been black and white, and a little bit hard to tell sort of which materials are which. The light levels in the photometric plan don't necessarily match where the light fixtures show on page C2, another different page in the packet. So we'd like to see that reconciled. And then there are, there are a couple of, you know, standing light poles proposed. The one closest to the northern corner, closest to the house to the north there, can only be 15 feet tall, not 25 as proposed. And then, we also, I think we talked, certainly staff talked about this, about having, knowing how many employees they're going to have here for an accurate count of minimum and maximum parking spaces needed, because the, for a building this size, that may not need too many people to operate, you've got 10, 13 spaces here that may be overparked altogether. And then the last item, again, pedestrian circulation, so these site plans should have pedestrian crosswalks within the parking lots to show where drivers should expect people, you know, leaving or returning to their cars to be. So please include those in the site plan as well. So standards for approval, these have been met, circulation, the buildings, you know, none of these items will negatively impact the surroundings, and there are no natural features to be preserved or protected. And then, compliance with the zoning ordinance, so those items that I mentioned just over the past couple of minutes, those are reflected here. We need those items, the photometric, the correction to the photometric and lighting plans, the color elevations and things like that, to, you know, to establish total compliance with the zoning ordinance. So those kind of feed into the recommendation that we have. So, staff recommends approval of the preliminary site plan for this marijuana retailer use at 962 Caesar E Chavez, with the condition that all the items under standards of approval number five on the previous slide are addressed and met to bring it into full compliance. So, now I'm done.
Thank you, Michael. At this time, I'm going to open it up for public comment. State your name and address for the record. You have two minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. Would the applicant like to... Would the applicant like to add anything further?
Um, yeah, so, I could answer a few of the questions. Um, employee count, for example. So, the peak hour, um, for employee counts is gonna be five, so... So, five plus the required three, uh, that brings the total account to eight. So, we meet that maximum permitted, uh, number of parking spaces. Um, and those thirteen were designed to, you know, have proper parking, uh, even at peak hours for any users of this facility. For the photometric, um, we'll be sure to revise it and, you know, have everything lined up and that pole be at the correct height. Um, as for the rooftop, uh, mechanical equipment, we were looking at the structural elements of the existing building. It's, um, to get it to house, um, mechanical equipment in the roof would take, um, a lot of work. So, we're going the route of locating it in the, um, northeast, uh, side of the building, between our building and the other commercial use. There's a little landscaped area there. Um, and we'll provide, uh, you know, adequate fencing. Yeah, so it's in that, on the right side of the screen, along the building, we'll provide our mechanical equipment in that location and provide a, a fence from the building to the property lines as to screen it, um, from the public right-of-way. As for the generator, we don't plan to sell any flowers, uh, outside of their packaging. So, there's no real odors that, um, are gonna create nuisance. Even with a four-to-five-hour power outage, we don't anticipate any odor being a nuisance here. Um, our HVAC units are also gonna have, um, adequate filters to, you know, mitigate any potential, um, odor from leaving the building. Transparency, we talked about. Um, and as for the painted pedestrian crosswalk, we'd be happy to add it. Um, I just, I'm unclear where it would be required. It's a pretty typical parking lot layout, um, similar to any other retail shop and it doesn't really, um, have, but with more guidance, we'd be happy to add that striping. So, that's kind of all my spiel.
I think Michael can help you out with that. Um, now, at this time, I will open it up for public comment. Please state your name and address for the record, you have two minutes.
Um, this is Darlene Clark, five-zero-six Nebraska Avenue. I am familiar with the, oh, did you want me to repeat it again? Okay, I'm familiar with the area, and though the, the diagram of the, of the building sits far off the road, when he do his, um, improvements or upgrades or his structures and putting in a parking lot as well, it's gonna bring it more toward the front of the street, away from, um, the side. That street is a narrow street on the side, which the owner's door is facing the building. And then you have the right side where it's butted up to, um, the property is butted up to a homeowner. So, isn't that kind of, what's the word I'm looking for? Isn't that still, isn't that kinda, um, he's not a thousand feet away once he bring it back to the forefront? Do, do, am I making kinda sense? Okay. Um, that's, that's a bother. Um, a very big bother. So, it's a, it's a, it's a building in the sixties, when it was done. It was for a car, but car was all over everybody, all over, which was breaking the code. But now you're, you're bringing a facility in here that's infringing, it looks like, according to the picture, is infringing a butt-up to resident, which is a big concern. Make, do that make sense? Okay. And how do we fix that, is the question? Okay.
Michael, did you wanna clarify the residential buffer requirement?
Sure. Let me go back to the site plan. So, the building is not being expanded. Uh, it's, it's gonna stay the seventeen-hundred square feet that you see there in the upper right-hand corner, and it does about the, uh, the, the rear property line. Uh, so it'll be, you know, a solid wall, uh, at the edge of the alley. Um, and then alongside that is the, uh, the, the proposed new masonry wall to run the, the rest of the length, almost the rest of the length of the alley. You can see in the, in the drawing on the, on the screen that there, it, it ends just shy of the Sarasota Avenue right-of-way line. Uh, and that's for, uh, for, for the clear-vision triangle, so if somebody's coming through that alley, before they reach the sidewalk, they can see up and down the street and see if there's anything coming. So, that's, uh, and, and then coming sort of down, in, in, in drawing terms, down from there is, uh, is landscape space as well that, uh, that, you know, that meets requirements for buffering against a residential use.
Thank you, Mike.
Can I take a stab at that real quick? Cause I don't think that answered your question. So, you're thinking the cannabis distance? I don't know if I'm supposed to do this with you, but, but, but there is no, there's no limitation as far as the cannabis requirements from their residential. I mean, they've already fit all that, they've already answered all that. If that, I probably, can't probably go back to, back and forth? But is that what you were trying to figure out?
Okay, we can't go back and forth.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was trying to, I was trying to figure, I thought maybe you were asking about a cannabis question.
The, there is no buffer distance to residential. There is no, they don't have to be within like five-hundred feet or a hundred feet. There is no longer a residential buffer.
It's churches, schools.
And they meet the buffers for like daycare, churches, things like that. Just to answer your question, to ans- to add further, all the lighting is pointed down. So, it shouldn't be a, um, it shouldn't have a, a negative impact on the surrounding residences. And then there's landscaping being put, trees being planted in the back, and there's already a significant, significant amount of trees back there too, so...
Can I make one more comment?
And Commissioner Shepherd?
Thank you. Um, the generator thing is just something in the ordinance. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but I don't think you can get out of that, so, um, you just have to have something. I don't even know if there's a size requirement for the generator, but, you know, maybe you'll have a generator for your cameras or something like that, but it's not an odor issue. It just was thrown into the ordinance with the grows, with the, you know, it was thrown in that way. We can't do anything about that. So, you gotta kinda figure out how you wanna do that.
Okay, cause it seems to fall in line with, like you said, like the grow facilities to find odor and all that.
It does, but it's still in the ordinance, so, we can, we can, we've tried to debate that all the time, but your best thing to do is just get something. Just a small generator, whatever you wanna get. I don't think there's a requirement as far as the size of it, and it doesn't have to be tied to your odor suppression or anything like that. It's just a generator.
Okay, we'll look into it and work with staff.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't want you to kinda be stopped by one thing that, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but that's the way it is. And that, and we're not allowed to change that for you.
Yeah, that's kinda why we brought it up, cause it didn't really make too much sense for us.
Yep.
But yeah, we'll be sure to work with staff.
That's all.
Commissioner Norcross?
No further questions.
Commissioner Jackson? Okay, um, the only comments I have are really on your, number one, I would like to see correct elevations. And you've got this beautiful rendering on this package and it doesn't represent the current, current elevation that's being proposed. Um, and then, I don't know what's accurate anymore, because some of these have been updated. The dumpster surround. In one plan, it said wood paneling, I believe, and then it said like, uh, a Masonite, I think like a Trex, a Trex composite-like deck for the face of the Mason, uh, dumpster surround. I would like to see metal, like a metal deck, but used in a vertical application. You can just paint it to match whatever colors you're using. Um, that works for you. You push snow up against it, doesn't fall apart. It lasts so much longer than the wood does. So, that's what I would like to see on your plans.
Referring to the gates?
Yes, I'm sorry, I should've been more specific. Um, and that is, those are my only comments with that one. Um, do I hear a motion?
And, and just so that, Chair, just so that I'm certain, um, the dumpster surround metal deck for the gates, correct?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure I, I included that.
Thank you.
All right. Is that it? Other than, okay. So, there we are. So, I move to approve the requested site plan for retail sales, small indoor, up to five-thousand square feet use as an adult-use marijuana retailer at nine-six-two Caesar E. Chavez Avenue, based on the findings of fact identified in the staff report, but also including a metal de- gate for dumpster surround, uh, as well as a request for the final site plan review to come back to the planning commission for approval.
Okay, um, do I hear a support? Um, sure, let's open a discussion. Commissioner Shepherd?
After, after the support, that's when you would discuss.
Okay. Do I hear a support?
You want a support? She can't.
No, no, I was saying to, to Tim.
No, no, I just wanted to, well, I wanna discuss first.
We can still discuss after we support.
Support.
Okay, Commissioner Shepherd?
So, I guess I just wanna make sure we're clear about what that means. Um, so we're, we're having it, so the staff has, is gonna do it, but they have to bring it back again?
So, we would, cause we did this previously, recently, I think, where we would approve of the very last, um, site plan that goes through the staff.
And that could be on the next meeting? Is that, or is it string them out another few months?
No, given, uh, you know, one, once we have the, the last and best, uh, drawings, you know, and everything confirmed in the items, uh, you know, from the, from the compliance screen, uh, once we have all that, then, yeah, um, I'm sure.
Does that work for the applicant? Is that something you can put together and?
By, yeah, yeah, we put together the correct plans and somebody's hoping to figure it out.
We should be able to have that for the January meeting.
Then I'm okay with that, so.
Can I just add to that? Can you make sure that the dates on the drawings are different than the dates that are on the drawings that we have currently? These are dated twelve nineteen twenty-four. I think that would be very helpful, so...
I'll make sure to check that once the architect sends us their plans.
Bring us an accurate rendering too, even if you got it on your board.
It is a very nice building. It's, it's very well done.
But we wanted it to look like what you're showing us.
Yeah, we're trying to, you know, bring life back to this lot and want to put something nice in there.
When we're nitpicking on percentages with people, I mean, you're faced with a dilemma with a building that's that wide and that shallow. So, we just want it to be fair across the board, so...
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll take a look and, you know, we'll work together with staff and come back with something that's, you know, approvable.
Okay. Um, do I hear a roll call?
Beg your pardon, I didn't hear who, uh, supported the motion.
Um, Norcross.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes to approve.
Commissioner Northcross?
Yes to approve.
Vice Chair Jackson?
Yes to approve.
Chair Sinclair?
Yes to approve.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you for your patience. All right, going forward, uh, number nine, old business. Michael, is there any old business? None from staff. Okay, new business. Um, we have application number P S P R twenty-five dash zero four-two Baldwin Express. This is a site plan review for a gas station accessory to retail. Before we start the site plan, um, this is zoned, I believe, C-three? That is correct. It's currently zoned C-three, so this is a permitted use for the site. It is not, we are not approving or denying the gas station at the site. It's just a site plan review. So, presentation by staff?
Uh, yeah, I do have a PDF version, uh, but that's the report. Um, Manager Bevan did, um, finish up the, the PowerPoint, but I'm having a hard time finding it now. Give us just a second, my apologies.
It says I emailed it and it went through at seven-twenty-eight, so maybe, um, refresh the, um, sent in.
So, while we're waiting, I just want for the public to know, with this specific site, it is specifically zoned C-three. That permits a gas station at the site. We are getting numerous applications for gas stations. Many of them need special exception permits because they are not zoned C-three. They're zoned C-one or other zoning districts. This is why this particular site does not require a special exception permit. Thank you.
I'm not finding it, should we try and load it on the, on the thumb drive? I'll be right there. Yes, thanks for your patience, technology has not been our friend recently. Technology has not been our friend recently. Okay, this is case number SPR 25-042, site plan review for 1019 Baldwin. The applicant, Baldwin Express, Inc., is requesting site plan approval to construct a gas station with eight pumps, accessory to an existing retail building on the same site. The, the building and the site where the gas station is proposed to go were originally two separate parcels that were combined, legally combined into one for this, for this use. Staff, excuse me, recommends approval with three conditions. Here is the, the zoning map showing the combined site outlined in green. It's zoned C3 quarter commercial, which permits auto filling stations by right. This is the master plan future land use map that shows a site outlined in red, sort of in the, in the middle of the image there. The, that, that pink designation on the parcel is for neighborhood mixed use, which is for, you know, sort of lower density, lower intensity mix of housing and commercial uses, things like that. Thing, the sort of commercial uses that serve the, the surrounding neighborhoods, and this conforms. Here is a, an aerial from Google showing the, the two sites next to each other. So Baldwin Express Liquor Stores, you see labeled on the, on the image there. That's the existing store. The, the square, the red square to the south is the other parcel that was combined with the northerly parcel. It shows buildings there that no longer exist. So those have all been removed. Those have all been demolished to, to make way for this proposal. Here is the, the site plan. So that retail building is sort of in the middle to the west there, in, in the middle of the, the larger lot that spans the west side of Baldwin between Beverly and, oh gosh, what's the street to the north? I believe it's Cornell. That's right, sorry. So, the existing building will not be modified for this proposed use. That's going to stay the way it is. The filling station will contain, will, will contain a new canopy structure, you know, over the, over the, the pumps. The design isn't finalized yet, but in your report, I put an image provided by the applicant of what they, of the, the anticipated appearance of it. There will be no actual occupiable structure on the, the, the gas station portion of it. So like the, the retail uses, if you're going to go in and pay, you know, in person, that will happen in the existing commercial building. Access and circulation, the, there are, both parcels originally had several curb cuts within the property, and technically, legally, parcels are only allowed two, no more than two. With the combined parcel, as the site plan shows, there, there are actually several. Well, this is the existing, yeah, it, it shows a, one curb cut on the Cornell side, one on Beverly, and then three altogether on the, on the Baldwin side. One of the, the one in the middle on Baldwin would go away. But to be able to access the parking lot and the, and the gas pumps, there are four proposed curb cuts so far. So, we need, we need to see measurements of the distances between the driveways and between driveways and corners to ensure that they, they conform to distance requirements in the ordinance. Excuse me. We've had discussions with the city engineer about this. They have some discretion in, in what they can permit, you know, in terms of the number of, of driveway access points on a single parcel. So, that will happen with the engineering review that sort of happens in parallel with our review. Landscaping and screening, the plan, the landscape plan provided conforms to the zoning ordinance in terms of what's required along the street and abutting the residential. And it, the, the plan shows a masonry wall on the west side abutting the, the residential. It initially showed it extending all the way out to, to Beverly Street, and we asked for that to be stepped back enough that, you know, people in the driveway from the house next door can see up and down the sidewalk before, you know, before they, they leave their property. In terms of development standards, automobile service operations within an enclosed building, so, you know, that can only be sort of the retail portion of things. No, no service or repair work shall be conducted on the site. Again, going back to the curb cuts, they must be a minimum 100 feet from any intersection, and as it is today, they're shown closer than that. So we'll have to, we'll, we'll figure that out. The landscaping, landscaping and buffering, we talked a little bit about that. It conforms. And then the, similarly, the standards of approval, you've got circulation, buildings, natural features, site layout and screening. These are, appear to be sufficient, and again, regarding circulation, the city engineer will have to determine if proposed curb cuts are sufficient, or if any need to be removed. And there's a truck turn analysis, so, you know, gas trucks are emergency vehicles entering the, the site. Those truck turn, proposed drawings are included in the site plan, but engineering will have to, you know, make sure that they, that they're correct. And then number five, compliance with the zoning ordinance. So, we need, you know, some additional information in the, in the, in the site plans. The final locations and dimensions, including distances to corners and other curb cuts of every curb cut on the property. The final materials, locations and dimensions of all buffer walls against the residences to the west. So we need a little more information about how those will, will end up. So with that, staff recommends approval of the proposed automobile filling station use at 1019 Baldwin with the following conditions. Number one, the plans are amended to include the final locations, dimensions, including distances, distances to corners and other curb cuts of every curb cut on the property. And number two, plans are amended to include the materials, locations and dimensions of all buffer walls against the residences to the west. And here you have sample motions.
Michael, can you go back to the slide that you were just on? The very last bullet point? No, the one that you were on, that was right.
This one?
Nope, one more.
The right rendition.
Plans are amended. It does say on the plan that they are going to put a vinyl fence after the masonry wall up against the residential. Now, that's the plan that I looked at. If you've gotten an up-to-date one, I don't know. And that actually does not meet our zoning ordinance. With the parking lot up against residential, it would have to be a masonry wall. I can look for it while we're going through other commissioners' comments. At this time, does the applicant want to come up to the podium? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Chad Holdwick. I'm with the Ullmore Group. My address is 49287 West Road, Wixom, Michigan. I can start by kind of going through some of these conditions and comments and kind of just explain our thought process behind the proposed site plan. I think the simpler item is to start with the wall, the screen wall. We did present it as such, as you just mentioned, where, once we got north of the building, we switched to a vinyl fencing. If that is not something that meets the zoning code, obviously, we can revise that and extend that screen wall north to where Michael had mentioned just where that dumpster is. He wanted to make sure we kind of brought it back, didn't affect a site triangle of neighboring properties. So, it's no problem. We can revise that. We had just presented it that way, where the buffer widened from five foot, where it was greater than 10 feet. It was just our understanding of the code. If you see it differently because of the parking, we totally understand. We'll extend that, that wall. Additionally, there's comment on materials and location. If there's any questions on location, it's just right along the west property line, running from south of the proposed parking area where the, or not even parking, but drive aisles for the canopy, running north, which will be now to the existing dumpster location. There actually is on sheet two, the overall layout plan, on the left side of the plan, there's a detail, kind of on the bottom there, that shows that wall. We are currently calling it a split-faced CMU block wall with a cap. If there is a preferred material that planning or the board sees as more appropriate, obviously, we're, we're all ears, we're open to that, but that's currently what we are presenting, color to match the building. I don't know if there's any questions on that, or I can just continue? Okay. So the driveways, we did have a pre-application meeting with planning, engineering, fire, as required. So we did that. Currently, there are three curb cuts onto Beverly. It's kind of just like a dive-in type, old school, where the previous use just had all these different approaches. So what we're doing is...
Excuse me?
Yep.
I think you meant three curb cuts on Baldwin.
There also is on Beverly existing. There, I, I can get the Baldwin, too, but on Beverly, we're showing one now, but there's kind of like these two, there's one to the west, and then there's these two that are kind of just barely separated. You can see it kind of in the sidewalk, there's like a little grass island. Sheet four might be the best to take a look at that. They're labeled as well. Existing approach to be removed, existing approach to be removed, and then also existing approach to be improved. So we met with engineering, we understand the allowable curb cut at the curb line of the road, and then at the right-of-way line. So we've satisfied to reduce that and concise that into one approach onto Beverly. And then you are correct, there's currently three on Baldwin, and we are proposing to close the center. So right now, existing on the site, there is really, there's one on Cornell, which is remaining unchanged, removal of one on Baldwin, and then removal of two on Beverly, is how the current site plan is proposed. Do you have something you'd like to add?
I just wanted to point out, I, I brought up the, the satellite view. If you look right against Beverly, the previous user essentially used the entire stretch as, as a driveway. So, so there was more than one actual curb cut. If you look at, you know, Google Maps or something like that, it, it shows there were multiple, and they, they used the entire thing. So, so this would be reducing it to one actual travelable driveway.
I guess to continue with that, we did provide a truck maneuvering plan for a fire truck and also a tanker truck, which will be used to obviously fill the fuel tanks. We configured those, I guess reconfigured approaches as a best way to maneuver this site where we saw most fit. I do have dimensions. Obviously, I will work with planning to provide those as requested. But just for the record, the proposed approach on Beverly that's being reconstructed is 85.3 feet from the center intersection of Baldwin and Beverly, so that is 15 feet less than their 100. And the approach from, on Baldwin, from the intersection of Cornell and Baldwin is 77.9 feet. And then finally, the entrance existing on Cornell is 74.3 feet from the intersection of Cornell and Baldwin.
Do you happen to know what the center approach is? The distance between that and Beverly? You mentioned Cornell.
The center approach on Baldwin?
Mm-hmm.
The center approach is the one we're proposing to be removed. The, the northerly one is 77.9 feet, and then the southerly one that we're showing that looks more like a hatch, like a proposed approach, because we're reworking the dimensions, that's 124 feet from Beverly and Baldwin.
Do you happen to know the width of Beverly by any chance? Or Cornell? They look...
Of the roadways? I don't, but I could scale it if you'd like me to. I could, if you just give me one moment.
I'm, I'm good. Go ahead.
Okay. So that's the dimensional and removals of the existing approaches. We do understand that with one parcel, the ordinance reads two approaches. We are, at this point, are not proposing any new approaches, just modifying them to be more concurrent with the actual standard of the dimensional requirements, and have provided removals that are not necessary for the maneuverability of the site and provide additional safety for our customers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, did you have something further?
So I wanted to ask if I, if I understood things correctly, and, and my apologies. Planning Manager Bevan and I were, were talking, while you were talking about the, the wall versus the fence on the west side of the property. So my understanding was, there would be a wall from approximately the, well, somewhere within sort of the middle of the building, from there extending south to Beverly, and then north from there would be fence. Was that, that's incorrect?
That, that is correct. I had noted that, right now, this is, the wall is going from here to here, and then this was fence.
Okay.
I had said that we have no issue revising, doing this all-wall. So, to remove the fence and just do a screen wall the entire length.
The entire length of the west side of the property from Beverly to Cornell?
Correct.
Okay.
And then you would have to hold back 10 feet for the clear triangle for the driveway?
Correct.
And, Madam Chair, I heard you mention something about the landscape area with the wall. It would require, you know, five-foot setback for landscaping, which this did include. It's not dimensioned on pages two or three that I see here, but it, but it is a minimum five feet wide between, you know, the, the property line and the travel lanes for the, for the gas station.
Actually, it is on two. There's a one little, small dimension, of course, I would see it.
Oh, I see, oh, it is there. Okay, there you go.
Sorry. It's my job to see these things.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Michael, okay. At this time, I am going to open it up for public comment.
One question, Chair, before that.
I'm going to give you the floor.
Thank you. Attorney Jake?
Yes.
Please.
Oh.
So, I'm sorry, so, so for, for the audience, I asked attorney, our attorney, if there was anything in the ordinance that calls out the distance between one gas station or another, and he looked it up for me, so.
Yeah, my microphone doesn't seem to appear to be working, so if you would want to fill in on my answer, because...
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, and I did look up, I was familiar with these requirements. That is for automobile service stations, not filling stations. So there are requirements for a maximum number in certain areas for service stations where you're actually working on vehicles, but for filling stations, it's just limited to the specifically zoned areas that allows them.
Thank you.
I'm going to open it up for public comment. Please state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Darlene Clark, 506 Nebraska, for the public safety. Could you explain to the public, there was a cap on service stations being added on Baldwin within that area? Could you explain, committee, has it expired? Number one, is it still in effect? Number two, and is this opening up for other businesses to bring the service, more service stations? stations in?
Thank you. Darlene, did you want to, Dar- Darlene? I am sorry.
I, I have only-
Ms. Bevan, would you like to elaborate on that moratorium?
The moratorium that was previously in place prior to my employment with the city, my understanding is that that was expired in April, and if the city attorney Jake could correct me if I'm in error, that no longer applies. And as you stated at the beginning of this agenda item, as the zoning district is C3, the previous recent applications that we have had for automobile filling stations are within a C1, and automobile filling stations are a special exception in C1, which is not the case for this zoning district, which is a C3.
I think my microphone's not working. That is completely correct. So, that moratorium was in place while there was a zoning ordinance amendment pending, addressing that issue. Since then, it has been lifted, since that amendment was passed, which was what I was just referencing to that prior question, where there is a continued now established in the ordinance, uh, ordinance, limitation on the service stations, but this, from my understanding, is a filling station, not a service station. The filling stations are subject to the zoning ordinance, and since this, as the manager did just point out, is already allowed by just permit, it doesn't require a special exception. That's why it's just being, it, it doesn't, it's not subject to those special exception provisions.
Hopefully, that answered your question, Darlene. I'll just elaborate further. The only way we would be able to deny this for a use is if it just really honestly did not fit. We have to have a very good reason to deny it, if that makes sense. It's by right, he is allowed to, he or she is allowed to put a filling station there if they meet the zoning requirements, so. Thank you. Thank you, Darlene. Commissioner Shepard?
No questions.
Commissioner Norcross?
That is correct. According to current legislation or the lack thereof, this is allowable and permissible, and the plans meet our requirements, that, my feeling, my understanding.
I have comments. The approaches, just, they don't work. Your truck turning radius, why bother putting in a landscape area? You're just gonna run right over it. And I really don't know the answer to it. I've looked at it. One parcel's supposed to have two approaches. You're proposing one, two, three, four. And I mean, I really looked at it to see if there was a solution. The turning radius in, from Beverly into the southern portion of the parcel is extremely tight. You have to go under the canopy. I understand your canopy is 18 feet. Top of a tanker is, for bridge clearances, is 14 feet, so that's not an issue, but the approaches for me are. And I don't really know what the answer to that is, because you've got parking in the front of this location. I mean, you don't want to get rid of your parking. Planning manager Bevan, did you want to add anything to this? I mean, we have a problem. We have a problem in the city where, I live off of Huron, and there is a marathon station there, and there's also an Amoco, I think an Amoco, they just changed parcels, and there are so many driveway approaches there that it is a nightmare. I mean, I'm four houses away, four or five houses away, I hear cars, accidents all the time, and this is a problem when you combine parcels like this, and you've got two lots, essentially, but the zoning ordinance says two approaches. So, what do we do? I'm trying to find a median for you, a medium. And I know trucks coming to fuel, it doesn't happen that often. Do you honestly know how many times a week, or how often, a tanker comes in to refu- refuel?
Yeah, actually, Chris Conklin is here with Corrigan Mechanical Contractors. He can speak on timing when the fuel trucks typically come and everything that you're asking.
Yes, ma'am. Chris Conklin, 1743 Pro Drive in Highland. They're on a contingency as far as sales go. Mostly, one time, it, from 20,000 to 50,000 gallons, it's probably one time every three days. It depends on the volume. I don't know what it's set up as, because there's studies done to, to determine basically how much fuel you might sell. I'm not privy to that right now. Two thou- two lo- two loads a week. So, two tankers, and the way Corrigan does it, they usually do it at the later part of the day, nighttime mostly, to, to, for traffic purposes. And I believe it's at a 50-foot radius for the tanker, so it's a, it's a set amount, and they do go underneath the canopy all the time. Most of our tankers do. The way things are going now with gas stations getting smaller and in smaller areas, so.
I mean, it definitely shows your, on your turning radius plan.
Yes, ma'am. It's there, though. I know what you're saying, and it is gonna be tight. It is gonna be tight.
Okay. Thank you for the elaboration on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Do I hear a motion?
I am looking at the, the, the truck turning plan, and when I looked at it initially, I was saying, okay, it appears that the trucks can get in and out, is, but I think you've brought up some points that maybe I didn't capture.
You can see it going into the landscaped area, the grass area, the, basically, the curbed-in green space. I mean, it's tight. It's very tight. Gotta have a good driver.
And that's on sheet six?
Uh, I'd have to look, Chris. Give me a moment.
It is sheet six.
Sheet six, okay.
I think there was two, wasn't there, Amy? Depending on the type of truck.
Correct. The, the-
For the fire truck and-
The, the sketch on the left is a fire truck, and the sketch on the right is the tanker truck, and they're both on sheet six.
Oh, I see where it does go through a portion of the building now. I didn't see that, or is, that's, oh, under the canopy, and through. Okay. Oh, this hatched area is the, is the landscaping area you're speaking of, just at the, below that southern approach on?
The hatched area-
Yeah.
Is where they're dispensing the fuel to the tanks below.
Okay.
This, you're talking about the rectangle vertically?
I was looking for the landscape. Where, is that the one off of Beverly you're saying? I was looking to see where.
This is landscaping, this is landscaping. This is, these are the approaches. Right here, here.
Ah!
Here.
Ah!
It's all in here.
Oh, yes. Okay. Oh, yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Excuse me?
Thank you.
Um, did you want to add anything? Commissioner Shepard? Jackson, anything?
Okay, I'm good. Anything else?
No, 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 no. Thank you for that, thank you for that clarification, yes. I see that now.
I guess, were there any other modifications for the motion that I missed?
Um.
Are, are there, are there any other modifications that we added during this conversation?
Can the-
No, I, I didn't hear any additional potential conditions.
Can the applicant come back up to the mic? As I'm looking at six, I don't, do you have that? Do you have the overhead image of that, Michael?
No, I'm afraid it's not in the presentation.
Do you have a site plan that shows the approaches?
I believe there's one in the packet, that PDF, you may be able to-
They are in the, they are in the packet, yes.
Yeah. I can see it. I just wanted it up here so we could-
Gotcha.
-go back and forth. Is there any way to remove the north approach and center the southernmost approach on Baldwin? I, I don't think that does really a whole lot to your truck turning radius plan, but it removes one approach. I hate, I hate that you have to use Beverly to get in there. I mean, that's so tight, but if you're only doing it twice a week, and we can get you down to one approach, oh, gosh.
I just asked Michael, you guys were collaborating, how this process goes on the number of approaches, like, how is that approved, and how does that move forward, because there is more than two? And he had mentioned that that's something we work with planning and engineering staff. So, for certain, we will, you know, if there's a modification of the plan based on their recommendation, we will provide additional truck turning and whatever is necessary. We haven't really had the opportunity since our pre-application meeting to have that collaborative effort. We had the pre-app meeting, and since then, we've made removals. Actually, you know, there is a removal of an approach very similar to where you're talking, and based on the conditions of the site, we saw this as more fit, but I don't see why we would have any issue running an additional truck turning template to see if that's more serviceable approach. We were just trying to maintain spacing between these existing approaches as best as possible, but we have no, no issue collaborating with planning and engineering to make this as safe as possible.
What is across the street, the A-Star? I can't tell what it is.
I believe that was a, that's a food-related use, catering or, or something like that. I'd have to check to be sure. And the, the, the building across the street from the southerly portion of the site, I believe is vacant.
I see the dilemma. I mean, you get rid of the south one, and then you have the gas station traffic utilizing Beverly, and if you center it on your building, then you're creating a hazard with people backing up and people coming in. So, really, the northernmost entrance is, is good for your truck, and the southern approach is good for exiting traffic. In the long run, I guess, we're losing one approach, so I'm going to give up my argument. I'm going to concede. Doesn't happen often. So, um-
Well, we appreciate all the thought. That's, we've put the same energy into this plan to get thus far, so I appreciate you looking into it.
Not trying to be adversarial, but trying to make it work for everybody.
No problem. No, we understand.
And feel free to, uh, remove the white vinyl dumpsters around.
Yeah, that, you had mentioned a condition, that one thing that we did mention was extending that masonry wall. I just wanted to make sure that you had that.
Yeah. And the dumpster surround, it would be nice if you used something other than white vinyl. White vinyl, you know, it's plastic, it gets brittle, it breaks, you push snow up against it when somebody plows, or maybe somebody backs into it, or you smack it when you close the gates to your dumpster, whatever. But anyways, I am done. Do I hear a motion?
You want something. Do you want me to include that modification to the dumpster surround?
No, I'm going to let that go.
Oh, man. All right.
But you do want to add the, the wall.
Do I need to add the masonry wall extension, or is that something that can be handled?
Add it.
Add it?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So, that would be the maze.
My suggestion would be to replace the existing vinyl fence as shown on the site plan with masonry.
Thank you, planning manager Bevan.
Yes, you do. I move to approve the requested site plan for an automobile filling station at 1019 Baldwin Avenue based on the finding of fact identified in the staff report, and with the two conditions, three conditions, oh, I'm sorry, three conditions outlined in the staff report, one of which should include replacing the existing vinyl fence shown on the site plan with masonry.
Do I hear a support?
Support.
Motion by Jackson, support by Shepard. Do I hear a roll call?
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Norcross?
Yes, to approve.
Vice chair Jackson?
Yes, to approve.
Chair Sinclair?
Yes, to approve.
Motion carried unanimously.
Congratulations, and thank you for your patience this evening.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Should I wait?
Who supported yours, Shepard?
Yeah, I did. Oh, seventy, okay.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay. We're gonna just let them exit quickly. Going on to the next item on the agenda, 10B is the proposed meeting calendar for 2026.
Yes.
Um, planning manager Bevan, did you want to add something to this regarding additional meetings?
Um, I had, I think it's fine for now for us to just move forward with this proposed schedule. I would ask commissioners that are planning on returning to consider just sending perhaps an email to staff to let us know if you have any conflicts with considering the third? Is it the third Wednesday of the month that we usually try to do, Michael?
First Wednesdays.
No, but for the-
Third Wednesdays for, for additional special meetings, yes.
All right, so you'd like some email correspondence with that if they have issues, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Going on to staff communications, anything?
Do we have to approve this, or is that okay?
Oh, do we have to approve it?
Yes, you do. You need to-
Um, do I hear a roll call to approve the proposed meeting calendar for 2026?
Yeah.
Or a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Do I- Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve the proposed meeting calendar for 2026 for our planning commission.
Support? Do I hear a roll call?
Commissioner Northcross?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes, to approve.
Yes, to approve.
Vice Chair Jackson?
Yes, to approve.
Chair Sinclair?
Yes, to approve.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, going on, staff communications. Any city council updates?
I know there was an update. The previous automobile filling station that had been before you all at my very first meeting, which was for Carnival Investments, that was denied. They had appealed that decision of the planning commission. And at the last, well, the previous to this week's city council meeting, the city council is going to be sending that back to you all. It's anticipated to be on the agenda for January. And just as an FYI, I know that the applicant is preparing a traffic impact analysis.
Is there a certain timeframe that they have to come back to us within? Or they have to wait?
No, but they would have to submit their supplementary information prior to the public notice posting.
Okay, so that is their traffic study, then?
They're not doing a full traffic study, just to be clear. My understanding is they're doing a traffic impact analysis.
Okay. Anything else?
I know that...
I do have a question on that one. Will that be another public hearing?
Correct. It would be another public hearing to revisit the special exception. And then they would also have to, as you all denied the preliminary site plan after you denied the special exception, the preliminary site plan would come back also.
Okay. Did that answer your question?
That answers my question. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then I also wanted to address the request from the chair regarding the community benefits ordinance that was recently approved by city council. I do have a brief, one-page informational sheet that we will include in the January agenda for you all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. And I appreciate the clarification on the transparency requirements for the marijuana retailers. I did not realize that, because I thought we were requiring sixty-five percent, and the state was requiring forty. And that really clarified things for me. So, did you wanna say anything about our next meeting on January 7th?
It's gonna be a full agenda.
It will be a full agenda. We also, per the State Planning and Appling Act, have a... We're drafting an annual report that just kind of outlines commission work during the year, and that goes to the city council as an informational item, you know, what do they call it? Report and file. Report for city council.
Thank you. So with our full agenda, you are anticipating a mixture of uses, special exceptions, site plan, just...
There's also going to be a city-initiated rezone application, as well as a possible city-initiated vacation.
Okay, thank you.
And that vacation is as required by the previous approval for 729 Linda Vista.
Can you repeat that last part?
729 Linda Vista, which is the former site of the Mark Twain Elementary School.
Oh, vacation, okay, I got you. I need a vacation. Is that it, Amy? Thank you. Anything further from commissioners? Commissioner Shepherd?
I'm gonna do something that I normally don't do. I'm gonna compliment you on, you see things that a lot of us don't see. So I think everybody on this board has their assets. And I think what you brought up is some of the things that you see we don't necessarily, some of us don't always see. So we appreciate that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Commissioner Northcross?
I wanna echo that compliment as well. I thought I had looked at this drawing, I missed that item. Also, I'd like to request that the, when the public hearing notifications are sent out to the different addresses, we could get an email of that notification as well.
I think that's a reasonable request.
Yes, and that would be prior to the actual meeting. I thought we were in line to make that happen. And if that could become part of a normal procedure, that our names are just automatic, our email addresses are automatically added to whatever mailing list is created, emailing list is created.
I know that previously, our email addresses are supposed to be confidential, that they are not supposed to be really available to the public, because... So she can always blind copy, but...
We just, we blind copy you all.
I would hope it would be a blind copy, yeah.
Just wanna add that.
Thank you. Yes, that's a good point.
Thank you, Commissioner Northcross. Commissioner Jackson?
First of all, since this is our last meeting of the year, I anticipate, right? Okay. Thank you for stepping up into your position as chair. Not an easy thing to do, particularly as transitions and things were happening, but we figured it out as a team. But I'm gonna offer some of these flowers for you to take. As our gift to you, unsanctioned, of course, but you can have some flowers. So the other thing, right quick, this might not be quick, it depends, but this needs to go on the record. So sorry, I'm extending this meeting a little longer than what folks want. But, okay. So we have thirty-two, at least thirty-two gas stations in the city of Pontiac. More than square miles that we have in this city. I think we've...
Somebody brought that up, I'm sorry to interrupt your conversation, but how is that? How do we know?
Well, no doubt, right? So some are closer to each other than others. It's not one per square mile, I just know we have more than we have square miles, period, in the city, right? So to your point. And that's not including what's in process, right? So that's not including the fact that Big Daddy's, under some other alias, probably is a couple of blocks away from the one that we just approved tonight. And it'd be one thing if you were to tell me, you know, other than tax incentive for the city, it'd be one thing if you were to tell me that competition equals cheaper gas prices, but that's not the case. So I question, very similar to when we had the conversation about, not dollar stores specifically, but dollar sto, like, like dollar stores, right? At what point is it diminishing to our city to keep allowing the same types of businesses to come? And frankly, business owners, landowners are doing what they're permitted to do. And so if they think that it's profitable, then they're gonna do it. They're gonna keep doing what we allow them to do, right? I don't think that it starts here. I think that's with the legislative body ultimately. But I'm going to say that I think there needs to be some type of needs assessment for gas stations done. That way, to your point, it might not say, it might not be a, you know, how many per square miles, but if we don't know what the productive amount of gas stations are for our city, then it's hard for us to be able to pinpoint what we're gonna allow and not allow, and then it turns into dimension returns. So similar to, I don't know if it is the M-word, the moratorium, and we can't do that, I understand that. I don't know if that's the next step, but I think there needs to be a needs assessment so that businesses don't continue to just continue to add gas stations wherever they feel like they can throughout the city of Pontiac. So I just wanted to put that up for discussion.
Can I make a comment to your comment, Chair?
Yes, please.
If that's okay. So what we wanna be careful of is we don't wanna just assume that we know how many gas stations should be per square mile, because if we look at Troy, if we look at Birmingham, if we look at Bloomfield, we don't know that one per square mile is a lot or a little. So I think we have to be real careful when we say things like this, because it came up a few meetings ago. We don't know what that number is. So, but you're right, I'm not against, I mean, what you're saying is okay. It's just how many is too many? I think there's a different way to look at it, instead of saying a blanket statement, and not that you're wrong, but per square mile, like, we don't know.
Well, no, so my original statement, to your point, is that we have more gas stations than square miles, period. In the city, period.
But we don't know what...
How many per square mile, which is why I'm suggesting that there needs to be a needs assessment or a study done so that we can identify productivity.
I would agree, just don't base it off of per square mile, because I don't wanna get us caught into a sticky situation, because we don't know what that is, right? At least I don't.
Well, four gas stations on Baldwin doesn't equate to four gas stations on Voorhees.
There's no simple way to make that, you know, what you're saying, but you might be right. I mean, you're probably right, like, there's probably too many gas stations. But that was my point, I just wanted to limit it so we don't say per square mile, because we don't know what that means.
Commissioner Bevan, did you wanna? Oh, Commissioner Bevan. Planning Manager Bevan, would you like to add something to that? You look like you're peaking.
I generally try not to speak any more than I have to on the record. However, I would just encourage you all to consider the fact that we have to be careful when we move forward with the new zoning ordinance, that we're not creating non-conformities. You do have a lot of, we do have a lot of existing gas stations. I feel comfortable saying that. However, we don't want to create a situation where we're creating non-conformities, where existing gas stations that we all might find compatible within the city is something, this is something that we can look at when we do the new zoning ordinance. But keeping in mind that we have a number of special exceptions that have been approved over the years, and we don't want to, like I said, create non-conformities.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I guess I just wanna say happy holidays to everyone, and who knows what's gonna happen with new appointees. I know two of us will continue to remain up here, myself and Vice Chair Jackson. But it has been a pleasure working with all of you, and thank you to the new planning staff. I see the transition, and I like it. So thank you very much, and happy holidays. And I will be spending Christmas at 506 Nebraska, so if anyone wants to join me, feel free. Thank you. Anyone else? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, meeting adjourned at 8:38.